Good evening, everyone. I'm John Kartsch, the village clerk. Welcome to the Village of Wapneers Falls Meeting of the Mayor and Board of Trustees. Today, Wednesday, February 24th, 2021. Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Roll call. Trustee Marka John, absent. Trustee Catalano. Trustee Catalano.
Here.
Trustee Neznik.
Here.
Trustee Huber.
Here.
Trustee Panessa will not be here tonight. Trustee Lammers.
Here.
Village Attorney Wallace.
Here.
Tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the Governor's March 13, 2020, Executive Order 202.1 as extended, which suspends certain provisions of the Opens Meetings Law to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meetings will be posted to the village website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of the Board of Members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I have also confirmed with the clerk that this meeting has been duly noticed. We will have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on a village's webpage and on a village's bulletin board. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmed that the legal notices for public hearings had been properly published. To begin tonight's meeting, we would start with KC Engineering, John Serofsky, to update the village board on the various projects in the village.
Do you want to see the minutes, or do you have them available? Or my meeting notes?
There, I put them on the village agendas. They should all have it.
Okay, okay, so going through the projects. Under construction, the boathouse is essentially done until the ground thaws, and we can do some topsoil and seeding, and then we're waiting for the light poles and the railing to show up to be mounted in. But Wapneers Manor is essentially done with the contract, except for those few lingering things. Project assignments that we're working on, we have Contract 5, which is the interconnect, and the extension of the Rupp 9 sewer. That wasn't done for Duchess Plaza. Oh, there we go. And we are still on target for bidding early this year. I'm going to probably next month be asking you to set a bid date so that we can get this out to bid. I think we'll be at that point. The water filter building and facility, so we're working on the USDA application. We got a bunch of comments back from them. We're working through. We need some information from the Water Department about rates and current debt status. We are working on finishing up, taking the preliminary design to final design for the water plant, so that when we do get this funding, hopefully from USDA, we can move ahead with the filter plant. We're working on the windless tank replacement, which may or may not go forward, but that's also included in the USDA application funding request. We are working on the grease trap, which is, we need a few bits of information about financial information from the village to finish that up. I think we're working with Cory on that, and I probably would recommend the village attorney review it before we send it up to EFC. The language for that, the grease trap. I don't know, if you're aware, that we're trying to change the town code or the village code to include grease trap information, so that should be reviewed by the village attorney. Bain Park, the master plan, you had a meeting today on that. Pretty much, we're moving ahead on that, so the park committee met today with the EPA. And then the last thing on the agenda we're doing is the EPA Brownfield Assessments, which we're just waiting for EPA to approve the last site, so. So, any questions?
If there are any questions, John, I would like you to stay on, and I would ask the board at this time to make a motion to deviate from the printed agenda and allow the grant writer to speak and update the board.
Motion would be to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
I'll make it.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Corey Yusevich will update the board.
All right, John, I just got to get, because we only have four members here today. It has to be a unanimous adoption of any motion or resolution tonight.
Right. Now, I understand.
So if Brian could just, you know.
Where is Brian? I thought he was here. Okay. We can't go with this without four. I don't know what happened to Brian.
Paul, Brian here. Brian here?
Brian was there.
He is no longer on our list of attendees. He might have just internet or something.
He's not on the list, no.
He's having connection, he's having connection issues. He's trying to log back in.
All right, we'll wait a few minutes.
Brian?
Sorry. Yes, I'm back. Sorry about that. I had to move to a different area of this office. We have internet issues here.
Okay, we're back to our quorum now.
Yes.
All right, Brian, what we did, we have a motion by Trustee Huber, seconded by Trustee Neznik, to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Corey Yusevich to update the board on the grants. Are you in favor?
Very good.
Carrie?
I am.
All right, Cory.
All right, thank you, everyone. I will make this pretty brief this week. I just want to give an update on some things as John just brought up. We just had our Bain Park concept meeting. We literally just came from it about 4:40 it ended, and it went very well. The concept, everything that people suggested and wanted, KC seemed to incorporate. And so our next step with that is we want to have one more public meeting before the final design. We agreed to have it post-election, so we're shooting for a mid-April date to have that final public meeting, to get any final input on the final design. Again, it looks very good, but of course, any input is appreciated. LDRP, we've been ongoing conversations with the DEC. There's been a little bit of discrepancy as to where we can put the biochar in Wapneers Lake, so we're just working out some details to see where we can do that, and it satisfies the DEC. The main thing I've been doing this week, to be honest, is trying to get some of our funding. Some projects are at or near completion, with a few minor revisions have been sent out, and I really just, between the DOS, which is the BOA, the DOT, which is the TAP, different projects have just been doing what I can to just get in their ear and see where we're at. For the most part, what I hear is they never went back to work fully, so most are there two days a week. They're very backed up, obviously, and, you know, they apologize and they say, "We're on a queue. We're trying to process as quickly as we can." So, yeah, I just try to make headway where I can, but really, that's been, my main focus this week is trying to close out some of these bigger grants and try and pull in some of this funding, so I'm going to continue to do that. Obviously, I know that's one of our top priorities at the moment, is to get money, so, yeah, between last week, this week, and probably into next week, I will just keep trying to badger them, see what I can get out of them, so. There's that, and really, the last thing is we've been working with the county. We actually got a grant with them, a CDBG grant, and we've been working with the county to incorporate Habitat into that. Habitat was building the two homes on Pagey Terrace. We want to extend the sewer. That's what the grant was for. We want to extend the sewer lines, and we just made great headway with that. Their attorneys ended up getting back to us, and we figured out how we can incorporate it into the contract, so we should have a contract by either later this week or early next week for our attorney to, you know, review. And for the most part, that's kind of what we've been doing in the short term, so. If anyone has any questions about anything I just brought up or anything else, just let me know.
Okay, thank you, Cory. Thank you, John, for staying on. Appreciate that. We can, at this point, continue on with the printed agenda. As Attorney Wallace said earlier, last week.
Well, there's just, I just need a motion to resume the rules, and then we can do that.
I'll make it.
Second.
If you don't need me, I'll step off.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Motion's in.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Okay, we will continue on with the printed agenda. As Attorney Wallace said earlier, at the last meeting, which was February 10, there was a motion by Trustee Lammers to ratify Appendix B, New York State Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative Plan, was seconded by Trustee Catalano, roll call, vote, all were ayes. It was carried. Tonight, we had the formal resolution number 02032021 of 2021. It's a resolution adopting Wapneers Falls Police Reform and Reinvention Plan, and you all had the resolution, and you've seen it four times at least. And could I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make it.
Who is that? Brian?
Trustee Lammers, yes.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Catalano. Can I have a roll call vote? Deputy Mayor Huber.
Aye.
Trustee Marka Johns, absent. Trustee Neznik.
Aye.
Trustee Panessa, absent. Trustee Catalano.
Aye.
And Trustee Lammers.
Aye.
Resolution is carried.
Okay, so now the resolution and the certification will be sent up to Albany with the adopted comprehensive reform plan tomorrow, from what I understand, and we will now be in compliance with the Governor's Executive Order.
Yes. I'll take care of that myself.
All right, Walter, is there anything you'd like to add from your perspective?
No, I just would like to thank everybody who helped me with this plan, especially from the Police Department, Lieutenant Capirelli, back of the queue, you know, Farrell, and PA Jeanette Williams, who helped put this all together and get it completed, along with our Police Committee, who came and in person, met with us, and helped us come to settling a lot of these, you know, talk about a lot of the issues that were brought up about the reform, and to come up with a plan finally that I think will improve our department a lot, and like I said, hopefully someday will become an accredited department.
Yes, thank you, Walter. The job well done.
Thanks, Walter. Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Good job, Walter. Okay. Next is a discussion, Public Health Emergency Plan for the Village of Wapneers Falls, Duchess County, New York. Village Attorney Wallace.
Okay, actually, last week, the state enacted a new legislation which modifies the requirements for public employers to adopt a plan for operations in the event of a state disaster emergency involving a communicable disease. So, school districts, BOCs, and now municipal, local municipal governments will be required to incorporate protocols that are substantially consistent with this legislation into their safety plans. And we will also be, we had actually been in the process of a drafted, an emergency plan for your review to be sent out to the union reps as well, and all department heads. That was drafted a couple of weeks ago, circulated. I don't know, you know, John, maybe you can let me know with the process if the union reps have that, because now that has become part of the legislation, is the union reps have to receive it. We don't have, we have to consider their comments, but we don't have to adopt them. But I want to make sure that we're in compliance with the law before you're going to be asked, you know, to ratify down the road, probably be next month, because this has got an April 1 start date. We have to have this legislation passed by April 1, even though it just got thrust in our laps last week by state law. So, you know, expect that we're going to be working on that. I expect we'll be working on that with drafts and with comments from union representatives. If that hasn't been circulated to them yet, I just ask that it be done so, as soon as possible, so we can start incorporating comments and ideas.
I did circulate to the CSEA Local 1,000 folks, and they're telling me they sent it up to their headquarters for their input, but I didn't do anything with the PBA union. Should I?
I'll tell you what, I will, yes, I do. I think that we should send it. I'm going to also send it to our council as well, to send to PBA's attorneys, since there are, you know, technically, ongoing negotiations on the CBA amendments. So, I would ask that you do that, so we can just get the ball rolling, at least with them.
Okay, I'll get that to their rep and to legal counsel tomorrow as well. Okay. Thank you. Next is approval to hire part-time police officers, James Hippel and John Martinez.
I'll make it.
Actually. Hello?
Hi, John.
Hi, Kristen. I had asked you the other day if they were interviewed, and Kevin seemed to think they were part of the original interviews from a month or so ago. Is that correct?
They were interviewed in November. That's when I had originally seen the names. I just needed to confirm with Walter that it was the same individuals that we had.
And the other question I had was the difference in the pay between the steps. Normally, so my question is, normally when we would bring an officer on, they would start at step one. Is that, what would we normally bring them in at?
That is correct. We have, well, I just noticed there was working on the budget, and one of our officers, John Reynolds, was supposed to have been brought in at step three, and I looked at the stuff I was looking at for the budget, and apparently, he would start at starting salary. Peter, I guess.
John Reynolds was brought in at step two.
Was it step two? Originally, it was three, but they gave two. That's fine, but it still says step one, because it's the same as every other one.
That was negotiated with the board when he was brought on. He was brought on at step two.
Okay. But like I said, it looks like it's the same pay that one of the other officers that just started in the summer at the same time is receiving, 20, I think it's 24.75 or something like that. I'm not sure. I don't have it in front of me. The thing is, is if we're looking to keep officers, we're bringing someone out of the academy. They have to go through field training for several weeks. They don't have the experience. They don't have additional training. We're getting officers like Officer Hitt, the two officers, or one officer we're looking at now. He's retired at NYPD. He has numerous experience. He's also was a sergeant at NYPD. John Reynolds is an MTA officer with almost 20 years' experience, additional training. To encourage these officers to stay with us and not, you know, transfer or move over to another department, where they might get another dollar or two, or even probably more, we're looking to give them that little extra step two or three possibly, you know, to show how much we appreciate that they're there, working for us, and with their experience.
I understand all that, but my question was, what's the difference? So, what's the difference between, because I'll be honest with you, we're in the process of hiring somebody else that has, you know, a different department, has a ton of experience. They're starting at step one. Budget reasons. We have, you know, a budget coming up, and obviously, we need to be careful of that, so the question is, what's the difference between hiring, what's the amount difference between the step one and the step three?
Okay, so we just lost two officers who had almost three years' experience, so if we brought them in at step two, I believe, I don't have the figures in front of me, what their new pay rates are, but I believe they would be just replacing the two officers who've just left. In other words, we're not, one is getting.
Well, we're not going to get the answer of what the difference is between step one and step three.
I'd like to give it to you. I don't have the pay schedule in front of me.
Yeah, I'm looking up.
The difference between step one and step three is about $3.50.
Step one is 23.54.
Say it again. You're all muffled, Kevin. Step one is 24.74. Step three is 28.23. I can appreciate everything you just said, Commissioner, about, you know, the experience, but, you know, we do need, this is my opinion, we need to keep in mind the size of our village, the size of our budget, and going forward before we put people up to those steps. Experience is important, but like I said, we're about to hire somebody else that has a ton of experience, and she's starting at step one. So, I don't know how, as a village, we pick and choose whose experience is more valuable to us, and who gets a step one, and who gets a step three, and who gets a step two.
Who are we exactly talking about? Who's the person?
It's a different, it's a different department.
Okay. All right, so how about if we just do at least step two? I'm not saying step three. There's a big difference. $3 is a big difference. So if you just at least do step two, it's not that much more different for it to be step two versus a person who just comes out of the academy and is going to go through weeks of field training, and still is not going to have the experience or knowledge that the person who has 20 years, that we're looking to encourage retirement officers to come.
I'm not questioning your motives of why we want to pay them, what we're going to pay them. My, what I'm saying is, going forward, when we bring people on board, I just, I don't want to, you know, this one's a three, this one's a two, based on any, you know, I'd like to know, first of all, how the Police Committee feels, and.
Okay, I feel that, like in any other job, unless there is a set standard, like no matter where, no matter, no matter what, everybody starts at, okay, step one, whatever that is, but if there is the enticement to get a better qualified candidate by establishing them at step two, not necessarily step three, I would be that. For a police department to have a part-time police officer that's going to be there and invest his time in there, to be there, and to be a qualified guy with experience within dealing with people, I would say he would, I would say he would rate more than a step one, unless that's, step one is where everybody starts regardless.
Well, that's my, that's my question. I mean, how do we, how do we pick that apart at this point? It seems to be, you know, when we're hiring somebody lately, are we going to a step three, a step two, a step one, who's more qualified than the other one? I just think we need to nail that down a little tighter than just picking and choosing who's getting these higher steps.
Well, the email that we received yesterday that came down from the PBA, from Rich, kind of laid it out, and it wasn't specific, it was specific to years of service, not necessarily to whom. Now, I think, from a perspective of part-time people, that everyone needs to start at the same place. If we're talking a full-time position where someone is working in, you know, Rockland County for 10 years, and leaves them to come here as a full-time position, that's a different story, as far as qualifications, years of service, how many years, you know, they got, they're going to potentially stay on and so forth. But I think for the sake of any part-time position, whether it be in the police or otherwise, it's only fair to start at the same place. Now, if they accelerate through that at different rates, that's something that, with Walter and the supervisors and the, whether it be Personnel, Police Committee, both decide, then that's room for negotiation. But I think for a part-time position, everyone needs to be starting at the same place.
I agree.
I agree also.
Okay. Okay, I understand that. That makes sense. So, can we make it part of the motion to approve that they all start at step one? Or both of them start at step one? Can we have a motion? Well, there is a motion on the floor to hire them.
I'll make a motion they both start at step one.
I'll second.
Can I have a second?
I'll second you.
Trustee Lammers, second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to conditionally approve hiring Ms. Brianna Crane as payroll clerk.
We're going to, I thought we were going to go in the executive session and discuss personnel as part of it.
That's different personnel. And John, you sent, I got that email from you just before the meeting.
Yeah, the reason it says conditionally is Duchess County Personnel is fine with hiring the payroll clerk, conditionally that she provides her credentials as far as her graduation, her education level, et cetera, that Jessica McMahon will get from her.
And does she have to take a test or anything during a time period, or?
Yeah, she will be going into what the county calls a provisional appointment, which means she'll be on probation for six months, and when the exam comes up, she will need to take the exam and score highly, is, score in the top three percentages so that you could reach her. If she did not, was not reachable on the list, she would be terminated, and you would work the list again. That's the way it works. And it's very important that she understands that as provisional.
I believe she does. And I don't know if anybody has any other questions.
Any hours, 20 hours a week?
Yes.
All right, and I know this might be a concern, or not a concern, but it might be brought up. Will this person have to join the union?
She is going to join the union.
Okay. Okay. That's all, Jessica, thank you.
Okay.
I make a motion to hire Brianna Crane at step one. Contingent that she provides her credentials.
Would have to be, it would have to be a unanimous. Adoption of that vote. In order for the motion to pass.
Correct, do we have a second? We have a second?
Yeah, second.
Seconded by trustee Huber. Roll call vote. Trustee Nesnick.
Aye.
Trustee Huber.
Aye.
Trustee Lammers.
Aye.
Trustee Catalano.
Aye.
Carried. I have one late addition for the board to approve Festival of the Arts in September eleventh, twenty twenty one. Can I have approval?
I make it.
Trustee Huber, second. Trustee Catalano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. John, I know it's too late now, but it doesn't matter, but this is the one they usually have in May, the school district, or this totally different?
I believe they were gonna combine it.
I'll combine it.
Yeah, Cindy's gonna give me a letter, as soon as I get it, I'll send it out to the board, but what she said for tonight was approval of the Festival of the Arts, so. There was discussion to combine them. I'm not sure if they're there yet with that. Get some update, I will. Get that to you. I did not receive any comments from anyone. Based on the last meeting. So there isn't anything to read there as far as public input. And that concludes the formal portion of tonight's meeting. You did mention executive session.
Yes, personnel.
Is there a motion to go in the executive session?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And that's for personnel.
All in favor? Okay, we can go into executive session, Rich.